Okay, it being that's six thirty-four, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. And looking for a motion to approve the minutes of October the sixth.
I'll move to approve the minutes of October the sixth.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a correction, yes. I'd like to do a correction. On number five, where it says the special permit hearing continued.
Right here.
It was actually should, the word continued should be out of there because we had closed the hearing, the prior meeting. And even though we did ask for some, there was a person here had for some information. We heard him out, but and then the last sentence of that says the decision was continued until November first. Because we were in a position to only make a decision.
Right.
Okay, any other corrections? Those in favor of corrections, uh, nobody is, what do we roll column, Sandy?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Dave, fair, yes, so motion passes. Any A and Rs? I don't believe we have any A and Rs.
That was only the minutes for?
The October fourth.
Okay.
Ones of the twentieth have been worked on and the eighteenth.
That's not our schedule, is it?
We did October sixth.
Didn't we, who's this?
No, we didn't do it since.
Dave Bond.
Excuse me, October the sixth is the one we did.
October fourth.
It was wrong here.
Yeah.
The fourth is the date, not the sixth.
Yeah, it's the third, yeah.
So it came up wrong in there.
Yeah, okay.
The sixth. Okay, um, so we have a special.
We have an A and R.
Do we have an A and R?
Yeah.
David Bond.
Yep.
I saw the A and R plan.
Yeah, here.
Please come up to the front seat because this thing doesn't do very good at all. And need your name and.
Uh, David Bond. I'm at, uh, twelve o'clock, running this here.
What's the parcel address?
Oh, uh, this is on North Woodstock Road, it's no address.
It's, uh, North Stock Road, uh, north easterly intersection of Tipton Rock Road.
Famous zoning issue place.
The Pratt land.
Yes.
There's a lot of discussion of that area.
Yep.
Mr. Pratt is with me.
How you doing?
Uh, okay, um, is, is it, is your name on the parcel as owner?
Uh, actually Frederick, uh, Pam, uh, the land is owned by Frederick Pratt.
Okay. It's fast. P R A T T?
P R A T T, yeah.
Well, that's that house that's going up on North Woodstock Road.
No house, no house.
No, this is up on the corner, here's the rocky here, this is the opposite.
Oh, yeah.
There's that little house right on the corner.
I'm talking about this one over here.
The cemetery is, I think, over here.
The cemetery is right.
Yeah, that's this one over here.
The house you're talking about is further up the road.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I see you just.
There is Pratt, right? I got it, this here North Woodstock Road?
Yeah.
It's fine.
Could be a bunch of them. A bunch of parcels up there.
It's that whole yellow thing, yeah.
That's the one.
Yeah, it is the parcel.
Yeah, that is. So if you go to intersection, right at the intersection button in front of the pond.
Wait, timeout. If they're recording with the record button. You can always splice in the stuff from the go-to meeting into the.
Okay.
He's after the first step.
Okay.
Okay. What do we turn off?
Good, okay, so does anybody know how to use this?
No.
No.
Which button you push goes turn on. Good thing we got Pam.
So there's a button that says record there, so you just push it?
Okay.
And then that's the off button.
Got it, okay.
Work your hands.
Such pressure tonight.
Thank you, sorry to interrupt you, just basically. Dave, myself, call me for anything.
Thank you.
You're welcome, nice to meet you in person.
Okay, so just, uh. So Pam, just what it is, is it's a large parcel land. What they're doing is subdividing this front portion or off of the remaining parcel land. So the land here is six point three one acres. Plenty of it down either, either one of the public ways. This is a private, this is a, and it's public, that decide, there's a section down the other end over here, there's private.
So that parcel is being separated from this parcel?
Nope, this is all one parcel.
One parcel?
See this?
Is it everything kind of in front of the water?
This is the parcel coming out, the rest is over here.
Is there frontage for the remaining area on another road?
Yeah, all the way here, all the way here. Three hundred and thirty-four, uh, plus or minus feet remaining over here.
Yeah, on Tipton Rock.
So Tipton Rock has frontage?
Yep.
Okay.
So it is land, area, frontage, and access, that's all we have to worry about.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, A and R plan, uh, for property owned by Frederick Pratt on, uh, Woodstock and Tipton Rock Road.
A second.
Have seconds, discussion. Hearing now, those in favor?
Do we need, I think, yes.
Corey?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Dave, yes.
Sweet.
Okay.
So we need, you want to copy, you got one copy or two?
Need two.
Yeah, need two. A pot of water copies here. Davis only wants to sign out, right?
Oh, really?
Did you sign the, the Mylar already?
Yeah. All right, great, thank you.
He didn't pay it.
Thank you.
Ask him if he paid.
Good night.
Good night, guys.
Yeah.
I don't think you could submit it without.
Oh, I just wonder if they paid.
Is somebody taking note?
Pam, I think, is.
Oh, who else?
But there may also have a tape.
Oh, we do, yeah.
It's taken on both.
Please, Tom Corbett, for the hot seat.
Hello again.
Good evening, who are you? Name, please?
Tom Corbett.
Did you sign in?
I did not.
Please do.
Like me to go through?
Yes.
Uh, so I'm here, uh, asking for an extension on the special permit. Um, we are coming up on expiring. So we are looking to extend based on National Grid timelines. Um, National Grid has all four of these technically four projects on the site plan that we've gone through together. So one of them right now, we are working with National Grid through a pilot program, which will be moving forward faster than the other three. There's problems throughout the whole state. So they've got, uh, what they're calling CIP studies going on for certain project areas.
What does CIP mean?
That's a capital investment project area. So that's, that's where all the interconnection, um, for National Grid and even a resource for that matter, they may not call it the same, but. For certain areas that came back for the group studies, so when we submit projects to National Grid, they accept them in. Through this whole process, they've created study and study and study and more group studies because of the amount of one solar mostly, um, that has been introduced into their system. Um, so that is in order to look at the impacts on their infrastructure and, uh, what needs to be built to accommodate the proposed projects. So those group studies have resulted in astronomically high interconnection costs. And those interconnection costs were refuted through the D E, D O E R, um, Department of Energy Resources. And through that process, the DPU has mandated National Grid to put capital investments into the infrastructure. Aside of what the developer is responsible for. Um, so that is being analyzed now for a lot of projects, including some of these later ones, um, on this site plan here. Um, so those timelines are one right now unknown, um, for the CIP anyway. Um, I envision the first project being able to start work probably Q three and twenty-four, um, for the actual starting of the construction of the four projects. Uh, the ask here is for a two-year extension based on the four projects, not necessarily the one. Um, so just for the special permit there.
The solar array?
These are battery storage.
Oh, this is the battery storage?
Yep.
Oh, right, okay. I remember now, so this is the whole.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it was divided into four projects into, four projects into one.
All right.
And bind.
And it does require quite a bit of infrastructure too.
Yeah, and we've worked with the fire department since and, um, in the town for that matter, on the easement part for bringing the water over to the site. So that's all in motions, uh, we're working through some final language on the easements and that should be wrapped up probably by year end, I would assume.
I need to ask you some technical questions.
Sure.
The reason that they're doing this study, as I understand it, it's the infrastructure investment because there's not just power going in, there's now power coming out. Because it's a battery.
Yes, so correct, yeah, and a lot of the new distributed energy resources like solar in plus the batteries now creates a two-way street.
Right.
Where power now comes from your power plant, comes to your local grid, goes to the consumer, doesn't stay, doesn't go back.
Right.
So it goes, it's a one-way street, so a lot of the complications and a lot of the discussions are around implementing, um, I'm just gonna call it infrastructure systems on, on those battery systems and the solar systems in order for it to top. So it can work both ways and not cause a disruption in the system reliance.
So National Grid doesn't currently have the infrastructure in place at this location for the energy to go out?
Um, there's batteries across the street, so the, the, the energy can go back into the system, it's just the protections that are put in place, um.
For load?
For load, correct, so, so the battery's not coming on while solar's on. So there's the protection part of that, that is.
Got it.
There's a way that we're doing it for systems that are not going to have what they're calling an A R I system for a distributed energy resource management. So these particular systems are just gonna go through, we're gonna have protections, they're gonna go through, um, they're gonna have a, um, operating schedule. So instead of having the system that talks to the lines autonomously and the battery being able to work all day long, these systems have to only operate certain windows until that system is in place. So there's a lot of conversations throughout, and it's throughout the whole state, National Grid has this network right now in Massachusetts.
I know you are a vanguard anyway, one of the first.
So what they're doing, they're looking at, they're looking at surge, so the lines, so the lines.
First you one of the first. One of the first of these battery connections.
Yeah, yeah.
That'll put.
Yeah, but my projects are the only ones being looked at by National Grid still right now, until everything moves forward and other, other opportunities open up for other applicants.
Okay. Yep, so, yeah, so, uh, it's a more of a, it's a surge in a line, so basically if, um, they don't want the batteries kicking in during the day, if, if the solar is putting power into the lines. But solar, solar has to go a direct feed, most of them direct feed into the line, so they're probably gonna get the priority. But on a cloudy day, they might not be producing and there might, the batteries might be able to kick in, so it's gonna be a, it's basically to see how they're gonna regulate the lines.
So there's a software, hardware system that has to.
Be implemented.
Yep, and, and we're working with National Grid and they've opened up the opportunity for other developers now to submit to what they're calling the A R I program. And that A R, A R I is, I believe, set to close in like April. Um, I believe is the goal for that program to close, or that window of opportunity to submit to the program is gonna close. And by the end of the year, have the systems operational.
Who's gonna own, who's owning and who's liable if something goes wrong with the system?
We are as a company, yeah.
Are you developing the software as well?
No, so that's all that, no, that's all National Grid is working with their engineers, um, our system operators are also working with the National Grid engineers to make sure everything can work together, um, so best solutions.
So they're gonna let you guys develop something and that's gonna happen at every single location of a battery, is that owner company is gonna develop a different system?
No, National Grid's developing the system that they're gonna implement.
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
We have to develop a system that works with theirs. So we just have to make sure that whatever we're gonna provide, our site can talk to their, their pole at the street.
Yeah.
I think I do it for us.
Oh, I'm.
National Grid does for us.
Yeah.
You can give the directions these guys follow.
So if it fails, if it fails, we have to figure out whether it was National Grid or you for liability?
That's FERC in I S O, New Orleans problem, really, that's beyond National Grid. Cause we, we have to file with FERC in I S O in order to them vet the protections that we have in place.
So they're liable for your site if something goes wrong?
They would be liable if we discharged all the systems shouldn't have.
Okay, I only ask because the battery technology and the fire risk is, is high. And this is new and potentially very helpful, certainly, especially with regard to the solar arrays and carrying capacity, so that's exciting. I'm just concerned about the risk and this is a new element I didn't realize wasn't in place.
So first, the first system's gonna connect as, as we expected. Um, National Grid's just working towards long-term solutions for their grid structure that we have to abide by.
Sure.
It's not project-specific really, it's just broad spectrum versus.
The general rules.
It's a general rule put forth through DPU hearings, beyond our control.
If I say do one, two, three, then you do one, two, three, cause that's what they said you do.
Right, yeah, like the telephone poles up on Clement Hill.
Yeah.
It's gonna evolve, that's new technology, it's, it's evolving and this wasn't out when they originally filed for the.
Yeah.
Special permit, so, I mean, they're working through the system.
Yeah.
I, it's time, time, if you know dealing with National Grid.
That's what.
That's all they have is time.
That's what I. What I was gonna suggest though is, since you were, your company is, at the very beginning, you're playing a role, being the first. Would it be possible for you to keep us apprised?
Oh, definitely.
Of how things are coming along?
Yeah, and I think I put here, I don't know if you guys even got this letter, I sent this to Ken.
Yeah, I saw it.
But I do have in here, I'd be glad to be back in front of you guys every six months for like an update, just, I hate, time passes fast, when things get lost, I like to do things on like a six-month basis.
Definitely.
Extensions, keep the conversations rolling.
I have another question, um. Do we have a decommissioning?
Yes.
Fee for, we do?
We don't have one worked out, but Ken and I, Ken and, so Eric and I, when Eric was still here, we brought that up, so we were discussing it in the hallway one day and we realized that there wasn't one in place. So Ken and I have decided that we're gonna work together on that and we're in discussion.
Cause that was, that was our, that was part of our requirement.
It's on the conditions list?
I don't specifically see it on the conditions.
Because we did decommissioning on solar arrays, we did a decommissioning on that too, that was talked about in the.
We definitely spoke of it, um, but I don't believe I see it on the conditions and that's what, Ken and I discussed it, um, I don't know.
Okay, well.
So we'll be seeing you anyway.
You'll be seeing me, yes, you'll definitely be seeing me, Ken and I are in discussion about that.
That's a condition, thank you.
Yeah, it should, absolutely do that.
Okay, yeah.
Agreed.
I'll make a, uh, motion to, um, extend the special permit for energy storage systems at two twenty-five Dresser Hill Road. ZP Battery for a period of two years from today's, from the, from the expiration date, should be.
Right.
Uh, of the original permit with, uh, two additional conditions. Number one, that the decommissioning, um, bond be, uh, worked out with the town, um, the appropriate town agency to, uh, uh, be put in place, uh, prior to any, uh, construction of the, uh, uh, facility. And number two, that, uh, um, someone from, uh, ZP or the battery or its, uh, um, subsidiaries or, or if you sell it to another company or something, uh, come before the planning board and give us an update every six months.
Until completion, right?
Until completion, yeah.
Do I have a second? Yeah, I want a second, please.
I'll second. And then I, I just have a question, will, do you think that any of what is working out, being worked out right now would affect the site plan?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't believe so, cause the only thing is, it's like a small piece of equipment that goes.
Okay.
One within our fence, which is already allocated on the site plan, it's just a different type of, um, unit.
Okay.
Yep.
George Shiny, Town Council. I, I'm late in the game on this, but I've just been recently asked that some people feel that the project was gonna die because it hasn't started work yet. The concerns was with the battery storage, you might already had this discussion during the permitting process, is cooling of the batteries and the noise related to that cooling? If it's going to be such a loud thing?
Uh, noise will not be an issue on this site in particular, um, it's very minimal, um, and especially with the setbacks that we have from other properties, nearby properties and especially houses on this particular site. Um, but pretty minimal overall on a, on a regular site, as you get to be about like a hundred feet away from these systems, they're right around forty-five decibels, which is pretty quiet.
Okay.
Yeah.
The cooling, uh, we worked with the fire department when we did the original permit.
Right, I, I guess, people that was more concerned of the hum.
Yeah.
Those kind of things that tend to radiate more than what. Not, it was within the, uh, parameters set by the decibels, but the constant humming of that kind of stuff. I did buy one in Buffalo, New York and it's, uh, it was quite truthfully nasty and they, they built, they ultimately built a barrier wall to prevent, they had a fan system.
Yeah, yeah, the fan system is astronomically louder for sure, that's like running this, an outdoor AC unit for each, each container.
Correct.
Um, these, these systems utilize a liquid cooled system, um, they're pretty efficient and not as noisy as the big fans.
Cause they built this huge.
Yeah, the, the older systems like, like you're speaking of, um, especially if it's a big array, could be very noisy.
One of the things we could do, George, is talk about, uh, setting in place setbacks for projects like this in the future to make sure that, and maybe you guys can help us think about that, um, for distances, to make sure our citizens are.
I'm in deep on bylaw stuff in towns throughout the whole state right now, so as, as Ken is as well, you have a very good asset in your hands right now.
Good.
Ken is all over it.
Thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, we also have a condition that we have a walkthrough to, uh, prior to.
Yeah. We would have, we'd have to, as a, as a commercial project, we have to abide by the, the mass noise regulations anyway, or CERMires.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second and discussion.
No more, for me.
Hearing now, uh, Sandy?
Yes.
Corey over.
Yes.
Mike one.
Yes.
And Pam?
Yes.
There, yes. You have your two-year consensus.
Thank you very much.
I forgot, I forgot your name.
Tom Corbett. C O R B E T T.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great night.
Having that time for the site plan review right now, that special permit, one minute.
So the person here from Spectrum?
Two of us here.
Yeah, if you could just hold, hold forward because of site plan review, we can do anytime during a meeting, but the, um, special permit, we have to have time-sensitive. If you could just hold tight.
Hundred Central Street?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I don't have, don't need your money. Yeah.
Look, no, no.
These, these here, I printed myself.
Oh.
One minute.
I see.
You can, you can start it on this, you can read.
Corey open. We're a seven-member board, only six active members, only five members here right now. So these five can, are the only ones that can vote on it, you need five positive votes. There is a sixth member, she looks at the minutes of tonight's meeting, she could vote next time around, or you could roll the dice and go to the night.
Okay. I say what's.
Roll the dice.
Roll the dice. The sooner the better.
It being seven o'clock. In accordance with the provisions of National law chapter forty-eight, section eleven, the Southridge Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November the first, twenty twenty-three, at seven P M in the G R Hall, lower level, Town Hall Forty, North Street, Southridge, Mass. Purpose of the public hearing is to send a special permit application as filed by Killer Classics, Inc., to offer sale of classic motor vehicles per table one of the scheduled uses of the Southridge zoning bylaw located at one hundred Central Street, map thirty-five, lot four, Zeller and Associates owner. Application and plan on file for review during non-business hours with the town clerk. This notice is also posted up currently on W W W dot telegram dot com and on W W W dot N A dot mypublicnotices dot com. Any person wishing to be heard in the application should appear at time and place designated, the chair and the Southridge manager. So please, if you've signed in, I hope.
Yes.
State your name really clear, but I have the minutes.
Sure. Wesley, Wesley LaCroy, I'm the owner.
Okay.
Christopher Capello, Vice President.
All right, so state your case.
All right, uh, so what we'd like to do is we'd like to, um, start a classic car and auto, you know, motorcycle dealership, uh, over at one hundred Central Street. Um, what this is, is, uh, I'd say it's a lifestyle kind of business, you know, related to cars, motorcycles, music, movie, culture, car, car culture type, uh, business. That we intend to kind of, uh, involve all of those aspects in like say the automotive, the cars, the music, movies, um, vintage collectibles even, uh, will be, you know, on display. There's a bigger.
All outside or?
Oh, inside, uh, so, so there, there will be some, uh, cars outside in the parking lot, uh, inside there will be some, uh, vintage collectibles, uh, motorcycles, um. We, we have a larger picture where I think we're gonna have to come here a, a few times.
Yes.
Um, our, our larger picture is basically think of a, um, a Hard Rock Cafe, um, but involving music, movies, cars, motorcycles. Yeah, there's a larger scale. It's, it's, yeah, I think I'm gonna have to be here a few times. Public, too, we want to make a destination for Southridge, people to bring their families, kids to come on in, um, or we're going for days to get the approval for the, the consignment or the sale of the automotive. Aspect of the business. There'll be other aspects that we're putting into motion as well.
How much of that building are you using?
We're at five thousand square feet, so it's a ten thousand square foot, uh, building, currently there are three businesses on the upper level, we have the entire low, lower level, which is five thousand square feet currently. Uh, we are in talks with taking over another eighteen hundred square feet of the, the first floor as well, the upper level.
Bike shop was.
Correct. Yes.
Which is rather nice.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's really nice stuff.
It is, and they've worked very hard on it.
Yes.
Where were you thinking of putting the cars outside?
Uh, so in the parking lot right now, we have designated, if you, if you know the parking lot, there is a railing that, um, goes along the, the street there, the abutting street, I'm not sure which.
Right.
Okay, on the backside.
The backside.
On the backside, on the north street side.
Correct.
So nothing in the above parking lot, just.
No, it is, it's in the above, cause there's no parking. No, it is, it's in the above, because there's no parking. There, there's some steps that go down to a lower level and.
Right, right.
Right along that, right there, right there.
Okay.
So you'd be making use of those steps too?
Yes, we would.
We've already cleaned it up a little bit there.
That's good.
Yeah.
I thought that was sad that those weren't being used.
How many autos are you looking at? Um, I'm thinking, I'd, ten maybe?
Probably the max.
Thing is, have, have you approached the town for a class two license and how many autos you can sell? You're gonna, you're gonna need, you're gonna need a class two license from the town council or the town.
I think we're in the works on that.
Yes, we are, everything is submitted. See, I, we got businesses up there that have a required number of parking spaces and so forth, so I just don't, without an exact site plan showing. There is a site plan for this place.
Yeah, we wouldn't.
We have public parking across the street within three hundred feet, so.
Yep.
It's irrelevant.
We'd only be utilizing the parking spots that we're allowed to put the cars and not, we wouldn't be taking the spot of the other.
Well, you're right, there is the public parking. It is people, the registered parking, correct. You also have, so many square foot requires so many parking spaces, but I forgot that we do right across the street have the public parking, so no matter what you have, it's. Excellent.
But out of consideration for the other tenants, you can't take more than your share.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So, so we have half of the building essentially currently, so we would not be taking up any, we wouldn't even be taking up half, I don't believe.
That's good, my hairdresser's there.
Yes.
I don't want to.
We know her very well, we know her very well.
What, what type of, any exterior improvements to the build and aesthetic improvements? Um, we're doing an extensive amount of interior aesthetic improvements. As far as outside, we're not really, it's, it's a brick building, it's a mill-style building. We're kind of running with that, we're, I think we're thinking about some murals that might go along with the, with what we're doing with the cars and the motorcycles, it wouldn't be painted on the actual building. I think we would be getting like a plywood or whatever and affixing that to certain areas of the building that are, you know, relative to the, the kind of business that.
Would they have, would they have lighting on them?
Um, if, if.
I mean, this is still up in the air for that part, but.
It hasn't been.
We just don't want to hurt the aesthetic of the building because the brick building is beautiful, the way it is.
It's very nice.
Yes, exactly.
It's also historical, so whatever you want to do to the outside of the building, before you can even come to us, you need to talk to the historical commission.
Okay. Yep.
In that regards, you know, I mean, I don't think you have to worry about signage, because for signage, you go to the building inspector and the building inspector will follow the signage rules. But anything like you're talking about, attractive murals or whatever, that's got to fit in with the historical asset.
Yeah, so we would never, yeah, we would.
You'd have to get approval and then you'd have to come to us to amend your.
Good to know, thank you.
Sandy, is there the windows on that property? I don't remember what the aesthetic is right now. Do you happen to remember what your neighbors or has the owner, do you guys own the building or does someone else? No, has the owner indicated anything about the frames, the windows, the size of the sign?
Existing, Pam, Pamela, sorry.
So nothing's going, the color won't change of the window frames?
The windows are large, show, showcase like.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm talking about colors.
So right now, the whole building, it's like a green. And we kind of wanted to do a black, we thought that would look a little classier with what we were doing. We were going to be putting in some plate, new plate glass to modern.
It's a little older, the glass itself.
It's damaged, there's fogging going on in between some, so we wanted to put in new windows and we kind of wanted to give it a nice classy look and we thought black would look nice, but.
Black's beautiful, is the, has the owner, have you, I guess it's the owner who has to.
We've gone through everything, he's signed up on everything.
So yours are going to be black down below?
Yes.
But the ones on the upper upstairs.
I don't know what this is, I tried to look.
But the way that it's the whole, the, the lower level, it's kind of its own area and I think it makes it feel.
Needs some dressing up.
From the backside.
Yes, and we'd be doing the whole.
Are you adding any lighting for the cars area or?
Um, no, we have some, we were putting in six security cameras and they have night vision and everything, so.
Nothing lit up like a, like a car sales.
More than happy to put in some lighting if that, if you'd like.
Well, I didn't know if you, you wanted it for security for yourself, you know?
The cameras have night vision.
But it won't be lit up like a car lot or anything like that, it won't be drawing.
Yes.
There's also one of the things that we, we're working on is the dark sky because we're part of the last Green Valley. So part of what that means is dark skies and people come here and are tourists in the region for that reason. So down-facing lighting, and the reason that I asked you is that I think lighting can really make things quite nice, it can. Shush it up, if it's done right.
Yes.
So for me, for example.
We only do things right.
Good, as you know, if you're into, to classic cars, you'll understand, but like a, a sign that is, has light cast upon it is much nicer than a neon sign.
Absolutely.
That's flashing and looking like Las Vegas.
Right.
If anything we do, we want to add class.
Yeah, well, it's, if you're into classic cars, I'd imagine that would be the case, but certainly that, that would be nice to see and just advice on the lighting, downlighting.
Okay, absolutely.
Because of requirements.
The awning, the awnings are still there, right? We're taking, we, we, we're taking, we took down our.
The awnings were in bad shape, they were in bad shape.
The one on the, on the back?
Only in with us, in with us trying to do the black with that, it would be clashing with the green as well. Yeah, see, because it was green and white awnings. And see, they're, what they did, they had large storefront door openings and over the years, there was modified, Pam, they're, they're boxed in with side lights, the standard doors or side lights years ago, they must have been a big.
That's upstairs.
Yeah, this upstairs, that's what we're talking about. We're, it's downstairs.
But they're downstairs.
They're downstairs, but still, still part of the building. Now, you're going to change the color upstairs, area too, or no?
No, it's not, it's not.
It's only the, it's only the.
The backside.
The lower, lower level. Oh, that's, okay.
And it's so close to the, it's so close to the street. I think that actually helps your security.
Yeah, I think so too, and the police are run up and down that street constantly. The building will be very secure, it'll be like a bank.
That's good.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
That's really good.
Anybody in the audience?
You said a Hard Rock Cafe type thing, are you going to go for a license?
No, no, not currently.
There's destination licenses available that I would think about sooner than later.
Yeah, the only thing is I'm not looking for riffraff, that's not, we, you know, that's just not, we're trying to, this is about cars, it's about, you know, it's, I don't want to invite that down, years down the road, maybe after we establish our clientele and we're more comfortable with it, maybe we'll bring that in potentially.
I was going to say, you said that was in the future anyway.
Potentially.
So you're not including that in this.
Not now, one step at a time.
You're right next to Scoops of Hope, which is a very family-friendly and beautiful thing to have downtown, driving pedestrian traffic and that's what we'd like to encourage in the area. So I would say that any element of any business that makes this beautiful and family-friendly and the kind of place that somebody wants to stroll around would make me happy.
That's what we want, that's what we want, we want them to be able to come in.
We have a bunch, a much bigger.
Much bigger picture.
I don't know if you know about one hundred and seven Central Street, which is the old Armory Building. I'm in talks of purchasing that building currently from Gray Cormier.
And what would that be for?
It'd be an extension of, of this. So basically the cars would, across the street, there's a seventy-five hundred square foot open-span garage that we can utilize to keep cars indoors. These can be very expensive, classic cars, very nice and we can do that. I also own LaCroy Heating and Cooling, an HVAC business. We would be utilizing that, that building as well, the lower level, there's a lower seventy-five hundred square feet. Maybe use, utilizing for my HVAC business, which I'm actually expanding into a home service business that's going to be HVAC, electrical and plumbing, okay? Do we, there, there's a four-family currently in there, I'm looking to make that the office for the, the cars and the HVAC business.
We do have some bigger plans.
They have huge, big plans.
As you can tell.
Would that be.
We gotta, we gotta stay on point that that's. But yeah, 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 but I just, so if you can just, the bigger, there's a bigger picture, I'm sorry, but, yeah.
I'm glad to know it.
What, what are your hours of operation? Um, so seven, so we're thinking of what, eight to six potentially?
Yeah, probably eight to six.
Let's say eight to six tentatively.
Monday through Saturday?
Monday through Saturday or? Yes. How about Sundays?
We haven't discussed Sundays yet, but.
I would say let's just plan on Sundays.
If you come, if you need something changed, come back.
Take a Mondays, maybe, it might be open seven days a week, yeah, but let's just say seven days a week right now. Okay. The other thing too is on your narrative, you had mentioned that you're going to be doing some type of maintenance or work on the cars within the building or? No.
So not maintenance, it'll just be vacuuming or something.
So, so this is going to be a detail, this is going to be primarily a consignment business where people will be giving us classic cars and motorcycles that we will be consigning, so really the only thing we'd be doing is shining these, these cars up for display. We're not looking to run an automotive shop, we're not looking to restore vehicles, that's not what we're looking to do. Yeah.
Yeah, fifty-six.
Yeah, but the Yabberwood's already been closed.
Yeah.
So don't worry about it.
Okay, any other questions?
No, I'm all set.
All right, let's vote for a motion.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is it a public hearing? I thought it was a site plan.
No.
No.
It's like the seven.
Okay, sorry, I did not read that properly.
Do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Sandy seconds. Discussion. Hearing, this is, this is the vote to close the public hearing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Sandy, actually?
Yes.
Corey votes.
Yes.
Mike won.
Yes.
And Peggy.
Yes.
Pair yes.
Okay, the hearing is closed, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit filed by Killer Classics Inc.
Or some part of it.
Yep.
Are either of these you? Do you have a website or social media?
That's somewhere in Texas.
Yeah, that's not us.
That's not us. To allow. Ours is Killer Classic Classics, is with a K. Classics Inc. to allow for the sale of classic motor vehicles per table one of the scheduled uses of the Southbridge bylaw located at one hundred Central Street, map thirty-five lot four. Velos, Velos and Associates owner. With the conditions that the operations hours be eight to six, seven days a week and that the, up, up to ten cars be allowed for.
Ten cars or ten vehicles?
Ten vehicles, ten vehicles outside, outside.
Ten vehicles outside.
Ten vehicles outside be allowed for sale per the discussion tonight. And that prior to your operation and occupancy, occupancy permit that the planning board reviewed the site and do a walk, walkthrough.
It's also contingent on the class license.
And contingent on a class, on a class, class two license for sales of motor vehicles with the town.
So you know where you go for that, it's on, this is the lower level and there's the main level and there's the upper level, that's great.
The, any, any major alteration of the exterior of the building, you come back before, would have to come back before the planning board for approval.
And you said you were thinking of purchasing the building? No, no, he doesn't want to sell. I didn't think you'd want to sell.
So that's a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. This is a vote to approve.
Any other conditions?
That's what I'm thinking of. The.
They're not changing the building.
Right.
Oh, the, I'd like to have a condition that the signage complies with the Southbridge sun bylaw.
And lighting is down, would, would it down face? No lighting outside?
No lighting, okay.
I don't know, you're not changing, okay.
Sign, you would want this, to do the downlighting on maybe and how. Well, you're going to do the downlighting on a sign, just, Sotar, where the bicycle place had this really nice sign and they had some downlighting on it on the corner. The downlighting is still there, actually. That's what we want to see. Yeah, okay, yep, absolutely.
Okay, we all set?
Uh, is there, I, I'm not familiar with the backs, oh geez. What?
No, not there.
Just happened. Um, uh-oh.
Backs about solid brick.
Yes, beautiful.
Is there a sidewalk there or what is the?
No.
No.
It's just, it's right, it's right on the street, which can be an asset if you keep it clean and neat.
Oh, that's what we planned to do.
Yeah, I think it's great, there's even a, there's even a set of stairs. Okay. There's even a set of stairs coming down, but of course, right now it has a fence there, so you're going to have to break through the fence, right?
We're going to leave the fence, but we're, there's a bunch, there's some brush up, we're basically leveling it out, we're taking out the brush, we're going to be improving that so that there's going to be some better visibility.
But I thought that the fence was closing off the staircases.
It's, it's, it's not, there's a gate, there's a gate.
Great, okay, so that can look very nice.
Yes, we're going to make sure it looks nice, that's our goal.
We didn't touch it, do you have your password? Cue?
Oh, the computer issue.
Hold on, hold on.
It's not, it's not a computer.
I've got lots of, okay, so I've got lots of sound. Say that one more time, the word, yep, yep. Got it, okay, and that's it, that's.
Right.
Uh, like pound? Got it. Okay, hold on one second.
If you were to get a, just a general question, would you put a liquor license or something like that?
Just one second.
You would have to come before us.
But you both.
Because it did turn off, is it recording, do you think, or did the screen just shut down?
George, I don't know the.
It's like they did on, on Sunday.
Yep.
He got a, he got a license.
How long did you sit on it before using it, is my question.
It's loading, go to.
Pull a building permit, I think, building permit is what, two years?
Yeah.
There's so much for answering.
So you could get it, not use it for a couple of years, eventually.
Start the process.
Right.
That would be frowned upon, but if you sense that there aren't going to be any more left.
It has to go to Boston too, which is.
Right, so you have a process to go through.
I think eventually we'd like to do that, but it was just one step at a time and we don't want. And then, once you do that, then you're going to have to come back and say where, where you're going to serve it and come back before the planning board.
I would go to the commander's office to see that, because they're, they're like destination licenses and they go away. They're going to go away after a certain period of time if they're not issued. So I would think they would prefer to issue one with instructions to it.
You can just surrender.
So I would.
Oh wait, so going to that, yeah, I see it and it's going.
Yeah, yeah.
I would just get the answers.
Reading between the lines, I think they feel like they wanted to do one thing at a time, but there's no reason why you can't.
If you want to have events too.
Thank you, Sandy.
So if you wanted to have events and you want to do like a pop-up and have people who, like a beer company and partner with them, like.
You can get a catering license.
You can get a catering license for that day, but it might help you, it might not.
They have one day with licenses.
Yeah, yeah. You could do that, sorry, Sandy.
My point is that if you go and talk to the town manager and let him know, and you've talked to Peg already, it's good for them to know that this is something you've got in your mind for the future.
Okay. All right, the, the other, the other thing along with this approval, that just want to state the conditions, that the use is in harmony with the general purpose of the bylaw, the use is appropriate location and not detrimental to the neighborhood, it's adequate, appropriate facilities for the proposed use. The proposal will not be detrimental or offensive to adjoining properties and the proposed use will not cause undue traffic congestion in the immediate area.
It also fits in with the.
Wait a minute. Where are you unloading the cars?
We would only be unloading one car at a time, we have a tow truck.
And where would they be parked when you did that?
The cars? Right, in the, in that corner.
In the lot?
Yeah.
Yes.
Not on the street?
No.
I would like for that to be a condition.
Okay. So there's only one, so in the, the front of the building, there is some area there where you could potentially park a car or two or maybe a motorcycle in the entrance and I think that would kind of make the business look good from the street too. So that, that was a thought as well, not on the street or anything, but in the very front of the building, there is ample spots for actually a couple of cars and maybe a motorcycle at the main entrance.
That, I think it's, yeah, I think that's great, my concern is I just don't want a tow truck stopping traffic on the street.
No, never, no, no.
Okay, good.
Chances are if they do, they'll go on Larrachelle Way across the street and do it, or in the parking lot.
In the parking lot is good.
Yeah, so I'll amend the, add that as a condition, that there should be no unloading of, or loading of vehicles
On a public way.
On Central Street. Let's just do Central, Central or Foster Street.
Absolutely.
Okay, if it's a side street off of that, or, that's fine.
Are they aware that that whole area is gonna change?
Yes.
And the proposed use is consistent with the master plan.
Right.
Okay. Vote to approve, Sandy Ackley?
Yes.
Corey Bowles?
Yes.
Mike Wong?
Yes.
Pam Payton?
Yes.
Payton, yes.
Thank you.
So all that stuff that we just voted on, you'll see that when you get your special permit decision.
Now, this decision gets typed up by somebody, by the planner. I signed it to both the town clerk and it'll go for a twenty-eight year period after she clocks it in.
But you can start at your own risk on, on the building itself now.
Okay, great, excellent. Thank you very much.
Looking forward to seeing it.
Thank you.
All right, make it pretty.
We will, we will. Sorry. Thank you very much.
Five minutes.
Let's do the, uh, go back to Spectrum.
For five minutes?
No.
No, okay.
We're waiting for five minutes.
Okay.
We have a special permit at, in five minutes, I don't wanna start the other two items yet. I'm sorry, but that's, I'm stuck by timeframes.
They're here, could a site plan review go quickly in five minutes? Is it an update or a new thing?
A new, home with the new use.
Okay.
I can open seven thirty and have them waiting.
How about seven fifteen?
Yeah, we're already at seven twenty-six, we're fifteen minutes late, aren't we? Aren't we late? It was seven fifteen, it's seven twenty-six.
Seven fifteen is not a continuation.
Yeah, and then it's gonna be-
Seven fifteen is just a decision.
It's a decision, yeah, so we can do that.
Not a continuation, there's no time.
Oh.
Definitely.
So seven thirty, what time's it?
Twenty-six.
You can't do it, just open it.
No.
Well, any, for the time being, any old business, let's get that all the way. Discussion zoning issues?
Um, not that I am aware of.
Hey, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Old, old stuff. The-
No, talk about one or the other.
The old, the project at the mill, that we had some discussion at the last meeting, I think it was.
We can't talk about that.
No, 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 it's not about that hearing. The island building that's already been decided.
Right.
There was a conditions that the fire chief took to court.
Yep.
And they ultimately agreed to those five conditions without going to court. Can I get those five conditions?
Yeah, they should be part of the record.
Part of the record, yeah.
They're part of our-
Can I get that from Peg?
Yeah.
You can get it online too, because it's part of the special plan.
It should be recorded also at the registry of deeds.
Oh, I, I didn't realize.
Yeah, it should be recorded, any special permit decision is supposed to be-
The court decision that went to court, prior to court, they agreed to-
Cause we, we got sued.
Correct.
And then we came back and then we came, reopened a new public hearing, rea- with the new conditions as part, part of the agreement.
Okay.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll talk to Peg.
Yeah, and the mass registry of deeds, you might be able to find it done, well Franklin, look under Franklin Realty, it should be,
You know that case?
Come right up, I know, there's a ton of stuff up there. Yeah, it might be easier.
The Green Path case shows up on our records, our Corey's. Corey record.
The Green Path? Where is that, that's-
Green Path, the one that Larry-
Which one is it?
And we, we all got named in the suit.
Al's Automotive here?
It shows up on our Corey records.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Mm-hmm. Even though it's a civil case, pulls all of it.
Seven thirty?
Wow.
Yeah, right?
Al's Automotive.
Cause he, they named us all individually as defendants. When I was working at Green Meadows, we had a rerun Corey's a lot, and mine was rerun and it popped, and we were like, why did it pop? And under the civil.
We gotta wait till seven thirty and- Then what we'll do is, what we'll do is, if they don't show up, we'll continue it. Open it. And continue it, we have to open it.
You open it, you can't-
We can open it with take no testimony.
Yeah, but they have to, we lose here, open it, won't you?
Nobody's outside.
Well, the problem is, is now they're gonna have to re-advertise or re-do everything else, I mean, even though they didn't show up.
Are they not here?
I think, I think you just open it, take no test, take no testimony. You know what? If they don't wanna go forward, they can withdraw without prejudice.
Who are we talking about?
Because we only have five members. They have to make a decision if they wanna go forward or not.
Yeah.
But they're not here to make that decision.
They're not here to make that decision.
Who isn't, the seven thirty?
The seven thirty, so if-
They're not gonna come?
I don't know. So if we open the hearing, okay, it's there, but to take no testimony, if they don't feel comfortable with the five members, they'll have to withdraw, withdraw without prejudice and re, reapply for the hearing. Simple as that.
So they're not here.
Right, okay.
It being seven thirty, uh, this is for Al's Automotive, one twenty-one Hamilton Street. Nobody's here.
Okay, I-
So what we'll-
I'll make a motion. Yep, oh yeah, you gotta read it. Yep.
Open the hearing.
Yep.
Mike?
Do you want, you wanna read it? Do you have to open the hearing? Yeah. For the record.
For the record. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, check of forty-eight, section eleven, the Southbridge Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November first, twenty twenty-three, at seven thirty P M. D A R, Hall Level, Town Hall, forty-one L Street, Southbridge, Mass. Purpose of the public hearing is considered a special permit application as filed by Al's Automotive for the sale of used motor vehicles per table one of the scheduled uses of the Southbridge zoning by law located at one twenty-one Hamilton Street, map thirty-five, lot thirty-four.
I'm gonna go check the outside door, make sure it's not locked.
Good idea, thank you, George. J S Investments LLC owner. Application and plan are filed for review during model business hours with the town clerk. This notice is also filed electronically on W W W dot telegram dot com and on W W W dot N A dot mypublicnotices dot com. Any person wishing to be heard, the application should be at the time and place designated, due to pay up. Chairman of Southbridge Planning Board.
Okay, and being that, for the record, that the applicant is not present to present, so I will make a motion to continue this hearing on, for, until the last agenda item this evening, give, if they come up, there's no butters or anything for the same site either, so, to the last agenda item of this eve- evening. And that's what we'll go for now.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. Hearing none, Sandy Ackley?
Yes.
Corey Bowles?
Yes.
Mike Wong?
Yes.
Pam Payton?
Yes.
Pam Payton, yes, all right. And now move on to the decision.
Come on, let's go back to, let's go back to, let's go to Spectrum.
I feel like Spectrum. What's the address?
Two nineteen Everett.
Two nineteen Everett.
Is everybody signed in, please, and speak to the black monster middle of the table.
Evening, I'm the Facilities Director for Spectrum Health Systems.
Hi, my name's Athena Haddon, I'm the Executive Director for Peer Services and Recovery Support.
Thank you. State your case.
So, um, we are proposing to purchase this property and use it as a peer recovery center. Which is, um, I don't, I, I, I'm a facilities guy, I can tell you about the walls. Athena can better speak to what's inside the walls, so, anything you wanna about the lot and parking and lighting and all of that stuff, I'm your guy. Athena can probably tell you a little bit more about what, what it's gonna go on the inside, as far as the building will get used.
Sure.
It's gonna use.
So first of all, I'm a person in long-term recovery. I'm two thousand eight, I was hired by Spectrum Health Systems to open one of the first of five, of the first state-funded peer recovery centers in the state of Massachusetts, and Spectrum at that time had two of the contracts, we now have thirty-nine state-funded peer recovery centers in the state of Massachusetts. They're as valuable to communities as youth centers and as senior centers. These are for people that are already in recovery.
From what?
Substance use disorder, so it's a place that will offer programming like G E D, resume writing, parenting skills, a lot of life skills stuff, as well as some fun activities, cause people in recovery, they don't wanna go to a bar on Friday night, so on a Friday night, we may have karaoke or something like that, there'll be no alcohol, there'll be no drugs. People are required to be in recovery, if they're not, then we try to assist them to go to detox and we can sometimes have funning for that to get people off, so just to be clear, this is definitely a, it's a recovery center, and so it supports people in, to sustain recovery, and it meets people from like, you know, early recovery to long-term recovery, so we have, because part of recovery, people like to give back, so you'll see a lot of people with a lot of recovery time come back to the recovery centers and give back as well. And, and there's a lot, there's a lot of fun activities, so Spectrum right now has five contracts of the thirty-nine that are with the state. We have really, uh, two thousand eight, we opened Worcester and Marlborough, and Worcester were direct, like diagonal from City Hall, we have really good, we're, good neighbor policies, we help our neighbors with cleaning up the areas, shoveling the snow, moving furniture, whatever folks like, need help with, we always offer help. So, I don't know what else I can tell you about it, but we do have five contracts right now and we run them very well. We have all five of our contracts around the state, Worcester, Marlborough, Lawrence, Lynn, and now, um, uh, Southbridge.
Great Barrington, Pittsfield.
No, those are-
Those are the states, that's the state.
Those are different programs.
Will there be any in-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, she's, she talked about our outpatients, yeah.
So that's more intensive outpatient, this is peer support, so it's peer to peer. All the staff will be people like myself with, with long-term recovery, so we, you know, we're, we're, we're in there, it's a peer-to-peer support center. No clinical services at all, no treatment at all.
Will you guys have any meetings, A A meetings hosting?
We do, but the state doesn't want us to be all heavy with that, so we will allow like a couple, maybe a week, but they don't want us to be just running N A or A A because we subscribe to a multiple pathways.
Well, I know there's a, I know there's an N A, there is an N A meeting in town, at least one, from my past knowing, and A A, I, I don't know about A A, but I'm just wondering, because as you say, peer-
Right.
Peer support, that's what comes to mind, you know.
And some of the sen- some of our centers, A A and N A and other pathways have approached us to use space.
Yeah, just to use the space.
This is a big enough space that we can certainly support.
If they wanted to do a meeting.
So it is really to support people in recovery, family and allies.
And that's one of those supports.
That, yeah.
What are your odds of operation?
We are, this is gonna be a tier, uh, this is gonna be a tier two, is what we applied for the funding, so this is gonna be open sixty hours per week, Monday through, uh, through Fri- Monday through Saturday, so it'd be more like eight to eight, in Worcester right now, we're at seventy hours and we're eight to eight thirty every night, eight A M to eight thirty, I'm sorry, eight thirty to eight thirty, so it's a straight twelve hours, and then on the weekend, I think they're like eight thirty to three or four on Saturday, not open on Sunday. So no late nights.
Okay.
Yeah.
What was Saturday, eight thirty to?
It's like just, uh, yeah, three thirty on the weekends, and, and not to say there's not late nights, but our late nights in recovery end a lot earlier than places. So really, really, like in Worcester, we're right next to the Tammany Hall location, we're right next door to the old Tammany Hall, and now there's another bar in there, and whenever we do have an event, we're usually closed down by ten, on special occasions, we're usually by ten o'clock when the, the bar is getting to go, we're, we're already done and shut down, so.
And getting back to the facility itself, so you can see it's a, it's a brick-clad building, so not a lot of exterior changes. There are some of those porches and stuff that, that need roofing and things like that, so there's really nothing to paint, you know, being a brick building, so there won't be dramatic changes to the building. We do plan on resurfacing the parking lot, and there'll be a lot of interior work, you know, fitting it up to fit our needs, building some offices and, and things like that, improving the interior, some, you know, H V A C, mechanical work like that, but no real major changes to the exterior, you know. It's been a little neglected, we'll, you know, maintain the, the grounds and, and things like that, paint some window trim and things like that, but no, no real exterior.
You own the building?
So, we are, we are in the process of purchasing it, there was some issues with the title, and so the attorneys are working out the, the issues. We, we thought that we would have closed by now, and there's some, the previous transfer wasn't done as neatly as it should have been done, and now it's, it's fighting the seller because he needs to clean up some of his stuff before he can transfer the property.
And when, what is the current use? Is it just?
It's a, I mean, so it's been a V F W hall.
Yeah.
The V F W sold it to the current owner and he's been operating it as a, as a function hall.
Yeah, okay.
And so there's a, like a license and a food service license and stuff in there. Obviously, we won't-
No, that's fine, I just was wondering, so did I see in the picture that there is some greenery in the front?
There's, there's a little bit of grounds in the front, some bushes and things like that.
So as a group, we really proponent things like that, landscaping is important because we feel it adds to the-
Absolutely, we will, we will clean all of that up, and, and even in the rear parking lot, there's some, some overgrowth, there's a stream behind it, so there's some growth, well, you know, when we clean up the parking lot, we'll clean it.
Stop moving.
How about lighting?
Again, no proposed changes, so there's, there's parking lot lighting there now.
Yeah, there is.
And it's, it's, it's relatively new, so it's, it's L E D, so it's been installed recently, I, I can't say whether stock's got certified or not. You know, we don't own the property, so I, I don't know for sure, I've never seen the lighting on, but it, but I assume it was done on a-
It's not overly bright.
Yeah.
No.
It's very dim.
Okay, okay, oh yeah, I haven't been a patron of the facility, so I really couldn't speak to it.
I do see the green.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, and we, yeah, there's absolutely no changes to, you know, no taking away of any of that, if anything, we'll trim the hedges and then cut the grass.
Ken, you guys, I'm just, I'm missing, cause I know it was an odd-shaped parcel, which, which building are we talking about?
So this is the building, so there's parking along, there's a street here, there's parking along here, and then, at some point in the past, this property bought like some of this parking, you can kinda see this shadow, so our parking is, is all back here.
All the way back.
Uh, there's like a, yeah.
There's a lot of parking.
It's, it's a weird shape.
Is there a fence?
There is a fence here now.
And what about, what about here?
Uh, I don't know if there's a chain of fences.
There's a brook, there's a brook there.
Kohasse Brook.
No, that's, no, that one's not Kohasse.
Yeah, I think the fence is on both sides.
What is it?
One of the, one of the dime planes?
I believe there are fences along the, along the brook, and, and we would maintain those, like, I know the fence behind the residential properties is in good condition and, and doesn't need repair.
Is there any?
It's not, it's not Houston Brook, no, it's another name.
It's Kohasse Brook.
Comes from Kohasse.
Hold on, my thing here. Yeah. Yeah.
I, I came to tonight's meeting, my name is George Chenya, I'm a county, town council. I purposely came to the planning board meeting tonight. I'm a recovered alcoholic, and I know the importance of peer support, at least within, for me and within a group of alcoholics that I've associated myself with. So I think that this is an important, an important function for this community. Because by having the peer support, it prevents relapsing, and it helps prevent relapsing, and people have it. And there's, there's not much of peer support in, in this community, other than going to AA meetings. And there's AA meetings on Sunday at St. Michael's Church, the Methodist Church on top of Main Street. And I believe Spectrum might have had one at one time behind near one-fifty Main Street. But peer support for an alcoholic, a recovering alcoholic, is important. And I think having in this facility like that is, it's a, it's an important facility for people in recovery, and, and I hope that you can support that tonight.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Well, this is site plan review.
Yes.
So you already have the use. So George, just so you know, we are not voting on the use, that's already allowed.
I understand.
Okay.
I just, I just, I just kind of want to stress the importance of a facility like that in this community.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Okay. Well, then I will make, any, any other comments from the audience? No, I will make a motion to approve the site plan review for Spectrum Health Systems at two-nineteenth Everett Street, Peer Recovery Support Center in the R-two district, with the following conditions. The hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, eight-thirty to eight-thirty, and, or Monday through Friday, eight-thirty, eight-thirty, Saturday, eight-thirty to three-thirty. That the planning board do a walkthrough prior to occupancy, full occupancy permit. And that all local border health, local state and regulations be adhered, adhered to in the redevelopment of the site.
Do you have a second?
Can I, for me again, just with the other business, downward-facing lighting, especially on that backside, abutting any neighbors, to make sure that any of your exterior lights aren't impeding on their property as much as possible, that would be-
Again, we're, we're taking over existing sites, so if they haven't complained yet, then they're probably okay. We don't plan to make any changes. If a complaint comes in, we have to address it, we'll address it.
Yes. I think for me, what I would like to see is things, there was not always good follow-through on-
Okay.
And not necessarily with this parcel, this parcel may be fine. But some people don't comply, and they haven't complied for decades.
Okay.
And so I'm new, and I'm here to make sure that this becomes a very nice, tidy place. And I'm super excited to see this building have a new life and one that is incredibly valuable. I think what I would just request is that, with regard to your butters, just noise, light, and tidiness of the green space would be important for me. So that's-
So we already properly operate a temporary facility in Southbridge, and that's inspected annually by fire and building, and we have excellent relationships with them. If you want to talk to them, you know, we have excellent relationships with them. So we're gonna do things the right way, this is our second facility in town.
Awesome. I don't know anything about that facility, I'm just thinking of the Cumberland Farms example, where they said they'd do the landscaping, and then it turned into a, just a mess. So I'd try to, like to try and avoid that.
Are you trying, are you making this a condition?
Well, that's what I'm thinking about, I want to know what that condition would look like.
I think the condition would look like that the site operator maintain the site in a condition, um, in a tidy condition, and any additions or alterations not impede the director butters.
It's a hard thing to articulate.
It's a hard thing, I mean, it's really, it's sort of non-enforceable type of thing, but-
And I can tell you we're gonna do it, and like you say-
Exactly, but at least there's something in there that says, hey, look, you, you guys, it's a condition, you guys, you guys said that it is, you're gonna take care of it. So I mean, if that's the case, we just put something like that. So a gentleman's agreement.
Yep.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
You have a motion, a second, discussion.
I think we've already discussed.
Sandy.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
Mike, yes. Pam.
Yes.
Dave, yes.
Well, folks.
Thank you.
Look forward to it.
Appreciate your work.
That's, that's Dow's building. Yeah, well, I had a problem with that from day one.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is the decision for twenty-five, or twenty-six?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six, Main Street, map thirty-six, lot twenty-nine, Christian Chikka owner. As you know, that the proponent described the site to us with building plans, and had a couple meetings, a couple meetings ago, I think it was. And we had closed the public hearing at that time. We did, I did ask for any comment at the last meeting, which I probably shouldn't have. But we did, there was a, an attorney that spoke, and we, we did listen to what his comments were. But our position tonight is to make a decision on the testimony that was presented prior to the close of the public hearing. And I will make a motion to approve the special permit application for a property filed by Christian Chikka for the reinstatement of a non-conformant structure per section six-point-five C of the Southbridge zoning bylaw located at fifty-six Main Street, map thirty-six, lot twenty-nine. With the following conditions, that the, there shall be no parking to block the common driveway for access to the ri-, for access, for access. The reuse is for a two-family, uh, uh, structure, for two-family only. The renovations are all to be in accordance to the architectural plans submitted at the time of the testimony. That the building be subject to a chapter thirty-four building review as required under the state building code. And I think that would be it for now.
I've got a couple of suggestions.
Yep.
That the building footprint not be expanded in any way.
Then, well, then, other than what's shown on the plans.
They showed us the plans already.
Yes, but they were not expanding the footprint.
Right.
And the fact is, if they expanded the footprint, they would then be, then they would be against mass general law.
Yeah.
That no debris be in the common driveway area, and that the small exterior area be maintained in a clean and orderly manner with minimum, minimum-
Minimum.
Minimal.
Minimum equipment. Or decoration, I mean, it's just too small, is what I'm saying, for a lot of stuff.
And, and if I could add one more too, that I just thought of, that the owners notify their contractors to work with the a butter in the front of the property, and not to impede their general welfare or access during any type of construction.
Well, that's a good one.
Along with that, I would find that the use is, uh, in general, a purpose is in harmony with our bylaw. Because number one, it's a redevelopment of a resident, pre-existing multifamily residence that was, been there for many, many years. The use is in appropriate location and not detrimental to the neighborhood, and does not significantly alter the character. Again, it's been an existing structure there for many years. The adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the operation of the proposed use. That's been parking, and the common driveway is, is a common driveway, so there is access. The proposed use will not be detrimental, otherwise offensive to the zoning a district, neighboring, or neighboring properties. It's a redevelopment of a blighted structure.
Right.
And the proposed use will not cause undue traffic congestion in the immediate area. And the proposed use is consistent with the master plan, it's a pre-existing structure, that's been multifamily structure for many years.
I would just say any additional congestion, traffic congestion. It is a tight area, but it's not gonna be any more tight than it was before.
Correct. Do you have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Three seconds, discussion.
I'm done, I'm discussed, oh.
Sandy.
I, I do actually have a condition that I'd like to see, just in general, especially because it's abutting other properties. And that is, again, downward lighting, and any motion detecting lighting be close to the, I don't know how you would say it, the proximity to the building, so that it's not tripping, with the other neighbors being so close, that light and-
Not to interfere with the abutting properties.
Yeah, yep.
I amend my motion to add some questions. Sandy, actually?
Yes.
Cory Bell?
Yes.
Mike Wong?
Yes.
I'm not sure.
Mark Payton?
Yes.
Dave Payton, yes. Motion passes. Yep, a twenty-day appeal period, after this gets typed up, I sign it, it goes to the town clerk, stamps it. And there's a twenty-day appeal period where the appeal goes to the Superior Court. And it'd be against the planning board, and not you. It'd be something that we did wrong.
It could, no, it could be both.
It could be, but mainly it's against something that the planning board did incorrectly. Right, questions?
Right, thank you very much, we really appreciate it, thank you, have a good night.
Good night. Do we have time to?
Yes.
Okay.
Isn't it some kind of state law that you really can't take it away?
Correct, it's an existing structure. I mean, you could do everything, it's still a structure.
Right.
And the structure is, if the structure wasn't there, it's a whole different story.
If it was there, it's gonna be a pre-existing.
Right.
Yep. Our town attorney agreed that we got the right to do what we do, if we wanted to.
Right.
You know, they, when you purchase a property and there's a building that close.
Can I help you, or you just here?
No, I'm just here to be, as an informed citizen, so don't mind me.
You want, you, you just, you, you live in town?
I do, I actually live right next to the YCA, so.
We're trying to convince-
Are you interested in joining the planning board?
Yeah.
We have a hold-in.
You know, it's, it's an exciting board.
George will nominate you.
He was at the meeting Monday night, we told him to get involved, and it's, he's, he's, what was it, political science he did too?
Yeah, political science.
So my son went to town to work. We're, we're a seven-member board with six members, but for a special permit, we need five positives. And if there's five of us here, it's tough, I mean, nobody, I mean, you kind of feel like you gotta, gotta go with it, but you don't, you don't have to, but I'm just saying.
That's, that's interesting, because I was looking at the recording clip too, but I was also looking at, a lot of-
This is volunteer.
Yeah, he's serving a little minute.
Twice a month, you know, Wednesday nights, yeah.
And you know, the other thing is, if you were unsure, you could start out as an alternative to the special permit granting authority. So just now, we acted as the special permit granting authority. You know, so we're the planning board.
Before the meeting, we could have said, okay, because we only have a five-member board, we wanna appoint the alternative, alternate member. Alternate member of the proven authority. But you again would also have to sit through, make sure you were there in the, in the hearing too.
Bottom line is, join the planning board.
Yeah, and you know what? It's a learning, it's a learning experience.
We'll send the town manager's office tomorrow, fill out the application and-
You're, you're a great example, Cory is a great example. Cory, Cory came to the planning board, she had a site that came to the planning board and got, went through the process. The room was filled, everything-
I had the worst one, they said, right? Next to Cumberland Farms and the coffin guy.
We had a couple, the coffin guy, but the bread lady was in it.
The bread lady was in it too.
Yeah, I remember that one.
But the thing is, is, and then she realized, and she got involved, and-
Yeah.
Okay, how would one go through this process?
Go upstairs to the town manager's office and fill out an application to be a member of the planning board.
Yeah.
Ask for Matt, who's the town manager's executive secretary.
Matt, you gotta Mr. Shannon.
Really, now don't, don't make me go looking for you.
You don't want George on your face, trust me.
Close my blinds.
George, 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 George will latch on, man, I tell you, he, he ain't gonna let go.
Matt, things have changed, choose Matt.
Matt is the executive secretary now, he used to be in the tax collector's office, the big guy.
Oh yeah, that guy.
Yeah, he's great, he's great, so he's Jack's executive-
I've already seen a lot of positive things going on.
You go in that office, he's just, he's always happy, you know, and he's really-
Lot of positive.
I hope he stays that way, and I hope council don't ruin him.
Okay.
That's funny.
All right, so I've got two things to say, guys.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
We did two full pause, and I want everybody to be aware of it. A couple meetings ago, we closed fifty-six Main. The next meeting, because you wanted to wait, to think of your findings. Mike asked. Didn't realize, forgot it was closed. No, the board always can do that. Yeah. The board can always ask for more information. Yeah. But he had forgot, I think. And then we presented it as we're reopening the sort of open hearing. Which, which was, ha, meeting's closed, sorry. And we shouldn't have taken test- Shouldn't have taken test more.
Including that attorney.
But Mike asked. I asked for it, so. So in a way that's right, we can ask for more information. More information. For clarification. For clarification, probably just for the- That wasn't really clarification, it was more, does anyone have anyone to say? So it was a, it was a fine line. It was a fine line on that one. The next one was last meeting. We were talking about, who was that guy? Oh, that was a chicken, Worcester Street Chicken.
Yeah.
So I said, all right, make a motion to close the pub here, and Mike makes the motion to close the pub here. I say Cory, Cory says yes. I go Mike, and he goes, and with these conditions. So we should have voted- Cause I never used to do the second.
We should have closed the meeting first.
On the closing.
Yeah, okay.
And we never voted on the closing?
No, we flew, flowed right into approval.
Okay, okay.
All right, so everybody's gonna be aware of where we are in the step.
We just have to close it.
And I, as I, Dave and I talked about this too, is from now on, keeping track of closing hearing and so forth, what's, what's going on. And like I was telling George earlier, when I'm trying to do minutes, am I, George out there? All I hear is, I mean, it's like-
It's not a bad thing.
No, it isn't bad, it's good if I don't want to hear you. But I mean, this thing has got a range of, and even between us, sometimes I have to look at, between my head turn, to find out if it was Sandy that said it, or Andy said it. If you go, me, it's like, who the hell said that? You know, so I'm trying to write the minutes.
Right.
That's why everybody sit here too, because the chicken guy on Worcester Street was out there someplace. I never got his name, good thing I had it on the, on the legal notice, I never heard his name in, in speaking, so.
How about the presenters, when they stand up there with their boards and stuff, can't hear it?
And it's like when you go upstairs, anybody goes and looks at the map to show something? Can I, can I ask a suggestion? Can, can we ask them for a cordless microphone that we can give?
Yeah, yes, I agree.
No, when I present, when I presented at many planning boards and zoning boards, they would hand them a microphone, and I would talk right into it.
You should be able to have the cable guy be able to help you with that.
We have a cordless mic that would just tie in.
Right, because we're up in, in the chambers, like the directions chambers, they got microphones hanging down.
Right.
Who would handle that?
It's difficult, so that's why when I run my meetings, I have them sit at the table to pick up the, and then the presentations are done to my left on the wall, and they're sitting at the table. So you would have to have your presentation or rearrange your seating to have it maybe be behind you or something.
Yeah, well, the other thing too is, all, all you need is a mic that you can turn on and off, that just plugs in, a cordless mic. And that's what every other board had.
I'm writing to Peg right now.
Yeah, see if we can do that, because then, like the presenters, and then if someone's in the audience, you can hand the mic out, and they can talk right there.
There's gotta be a mic that you can add to the system, it's got to be.
There's gotta be a, a mic that you can add into it.
Or a better, a better unit.
Yeah.
Cause cable TV should have something to be able to help you, I mean, that's what runs this.
I mean, isn't that what this is to George? These are supposed to be microphones.
I don't know, those are all different, but, and that's for the table, I mean, you, you, when you're out here, there's nothing, so.
No, you're right, and I, and like I said, I, in fact, Sturridge had a cordless mic.
I think it's, your board is too important to misinformation, really, if there's some contention to be done.
Yeah, the counselors, who cares what they say?
I, I don't.
But those are replayed, we can learn.
Yeah, exactly, you get it.
I hate, I hate subcommittee, I wish they did away with all subcommittee, they just did it, because we do the work in subcommittee, and then we go to council, and they do it all over again.
I know.
Yeah, I know.
So, get rid of subcommittee meetings. Have a council meeting every week.
I sent a request to Peg, and I copied you, Dave, on it.
Do we have anything on the workshop? Or do you want to try?
No, I don't think so.
I'm willing.
I want to apologize to you, David.
No, I mean, it's a mistake that I made, too.
No, no, no. I'm talking about that. I used to take the minutes for this meeting, and I was very good at it.
Mm-hmm.
And I feel bad that you're doing it, but you know, with my husband's illness, I have so much on my plate.
Oh, it's not
I just can't add anything.
You have nothing to worry.
But I feel bad, because I'm very good at that.
Maybe he's good at taking that.
He could be.
Should I plug that to you?
No, you just do it when you're here.
The other thing, too, is we've, who is accepting the applications for special permits and stuff? We're not getting any information. We get an application, but there should at least be a small site plan, like the one on Central Street. We should have I know there's site plan of record for that site. Even if they brought out the old site plan of record, so that showed the designated parking spaces and stuff like that, and you can have something that, that can be filed with the application. The same with the last one for the site plan for Everett Street. There is a site plan on that. I, I know I did it. I did the one on, years ago, I did the one on Central Street. I, I, I know there's site plans.
I think Peg, Peg just doesn't, Peg doesn't get as much as she can do, I guess, you know.
Peg, I think, just takes an application, but I mean, maybe we got to tell the people, well, your application is incomplete.
Well, that is absolutely correct.
You have to, you, according to our regs, you're supposed to have a plan or a site plan.
A homegrown something.
Even if it's a hand-drawn sketch or something, I mean, but when we got nothing, we're going on the tax map, it's just not the right way of doing it, especially a special permit.
I did bring that up, but the thing is, right now, a lot of extraordinary circumstances.
Special permit should require a site, it doesn't have to be an engineered site plan, but at least a site plan submitted with the application.
Well, when I sit next to over there and I'm doing the minutes, between that phone and people walking through the door, it's like every five minutes, there's something going on.
A form, a checkoff list. I've been advocating that with inspections. Make the job easier, not only for you, but for the people coming in.
There was one for the applicant. There is one. Sandy made one.
What I did was, I have, and I think the form is still on there, and I printed it on colored paper, because there was so much
Yeah.
to be done with a special permit.
And the pink pa, it was a pink paper, wasn't it?
Sometimes pink and
But on the top of the file, it gets filed right with it. So, Sandy had her thing, and it was checked off that everything, because it's easy It's easy to, it's easy to miss, because even when you write the decision, did the decision get written? Did it not? When did it get written? It's, the record is there. Did it, and it's a tough one. They're supposed to record these decisions at the registry. Ninety-nine percent of them don't, but we don't have any enforcement power on that. That's the problem.
But at least if you have that form filled out, at least it makes your job a little easier, so if it's not checked off, hey, sorry, we can't
And the thing is, right, with, 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 if we can get a planner here,
Right.
that can get solved. But it's got to be a planner that's willing to be organized.
I just sent a request to Peg and Ken that any, any applicants moving forward need a site plan review prior and proposed.
No, it's not a review. The review was done
Site, right.
A site plan, just a site, a site plan, along with their application.
Yeah.
Just make it easier for you guys.
It's hard, because I found it tonight.
If it's not checked off, I'm sorry, we can't
We got, and then we got nothing to go back on.
Right.
Right.
We got nothing to go back on down the road.
We could potentially make a decision that isn't compliant with
You're right. Central Street's a great example. We're going on because we all know the site and everything else, but down the road, no one's going to know what our thinking was, and at least it says the parking along the back. It should have been a site plan. He should have hand-marked the square parking for, for
Vehicle, ten vehicles.
Classic vehicles, or ten vehicles, whatever the name vehicle was, and at least we have something put in the file. Look it. You agree to that. Yeah, our narratives, narratives are bad.
I did that with my chicken, not my chicken. No, I did it with my chickens when I had to move the coop, because it was too close to the border, and then I had to do it with my Airbnb and show you where my parking was going to be.
Yeah.
And I remember filling it out for you back then.
Yeah, and I, and I found, I've, I've never, especially a special permit. Site plan, okay, yeah, you might be able to get away with a little bit, because it's, the use is allowed, everything. But we're allowing a special use on a site, and we should have a record of the site plan
Right.
for the file.
Okay.
Anyway, I will make a motion to
It being 809.
I will make a motion to close the meeting.
And continue it on November the 15th at 6:30 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
I am second.
Before I just remember, stop the recording.
Pam?
Give us two minutes.
Sandy?
Yeah.
Cory?
Yes.
Yes.
Dave, yes.
Okay.
Meeting is over, guys.